It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, with that, I will be serving as acting chairperson. Our first matter of business is to approve our meeting minutes from July 10th and August 21st, which have been included in everyone's packets. Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes for the meetings which you attended?
Yes.
All right. With that, let me see.
I did not attend.
I was gonna say, you weren't at the one, you were...
Correct.
Not both of them, okay. With that, I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes for both July 10th and August 21st.
That was only one of the meetings, so...
Oh, I'll move that both sets of meeting minutes be approved, as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, with that, we will move into our first matter for this evening. If city staff could please read the record, read it into record, please.
Kathy Romero Lessie applies for a special use for a type-two restaurant at 843 Dodge Avenue. 843 Dodge Avenue is located in the C1 Commercial District, which requires a special use permit for a type-two restaurant to operate, zoning code section 61023. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case.
All right, if I could have everyone who thinks they will speak on this matter, please stand and raise your right hand. Is it just you? Okay, if you'd just stand and raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in this matter to the best of your ability? All right, come forward, and you can come right to the microphone here in the center. And tell us your name, please.
My name is Kathy Romero.
Okay, and where do you live, please?
My address is 5354 West Patterson.
Okay. And if you could tell us about the project that you have.
Okay, well, I would like to open a Mexican, fast-food Mexican authentic, Mexican restaurant. I'm so sorry, I'm so nervous.
That's okay.
It's at 843 Dodge Avenue. My hours of operation would be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I would have a number of five employees. We would have deliveries, and we also would have carryouts. It's basically more of a, like a fast-food Mexican restaurant, so we'll have carryouts also, but you could also, like, quick bite to eat if you want to stop by, you know? And that's pretty much it.
Will you have a dining room?
No.
Okay, so it will basically be just takeout?
Yeah, it's pretty much more takeout, because it's more like a fast-food Mexican restaurant.
Okay.
So, like, you could have a quick bite to eat, but, you know, nothing fancy or anything.
All right. Now, I noticed that you do have some tables in the restaurant.
Yes, we do. We have a total of 21 seats available.
And you have, according to this, 24 parking spaces in the parking lot that you have used to?
Yes, there's 24 parking spaces. We were told we could take four of the parking spaces. Two of the parking spaces, we are going to use for drivers, delivery drivers, because we don't want them to park in the street, you know, take other people's parking spaces from the neighbors. And there's other, more parking available for customers. You know, I noticed that there's always, like, parking space available, there's always people coming in and out, so I don't think that's going to be much of a problem.
Because the parking that you're referring to, for the four spaces you were told you could get, is that in the public lot that faces Dodge?
Yeah, it's in the public lot.
So, who, by whom were you told you could take four of the spaces? I guess it's a public lot.
I mean, by the owner of the property, he told us that usually, I think we were able to take four of the parking spots. That's what we were told.
And where are your employees going to park?
We're going to try to have employees park in the street where they're allowed to park. We don't want them either to take, like, neighborhood parking spaces.
So parking on Dodge is not by permit?
I haven't looked into it, but there's a lot of businesses around, so I'm pretty sure there's, like, people parking on the street. Like, I could see if, I'll try to figure out if we could park, like, along Dodge Avenue or Main Street.
Won't be main.
Your proposed location is where Subway currently was, or was recently, correct?
Actually, there used to be a Subway, but we're next to it.
Okay.
Yeah, and the Subway closed down already.
And as you know, in your papers, it says that trucks for deliveries?
Mm-hmm.
Meaning deliveries of your produce?
Oh, no, like, if we have deliveries, like, food or business...
So your delivery drivers, so when you get your produce and meat and vegetables, where are those deliveries going to happen?
I noticed that all the deliveries from other businesses do take, they take part in the front, so I'm pretty sure that's the same way that we're going to have everything delivered to. They usually park in the front. I've noticed that, like, for 7-Eleven, they usually park in the front and they unload right in the front, because there's no back space, there's no alley. So the only space they have available is the front.
Are there going to be any waitstaff at your restaurant?
No, no. We're just going to have a cashier in the front, and we're going to have the cooks, and that's it.
And is there any, you'll be distributing plastic, silverware, and paper napkins and such?
Yes.
And have you, are you familiar with the Evanston Litter Plan and the Garbage Collection Plan?
Yes, actually, Mrs. Glock gave me a copy of it, so I have it right here.
Okay, and you're prepared to comply with those?
Yes, mm-hmm.
Is this restaurant any part of a chain? Is it, are there other locations that exist?
There are other locations with the same name, but this is actually the first one that I'm opening with the same, so I'm not related to any of the other ones.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And have you worked in the food service industry before?
I have worked in the food industry, but as a waitress. But my dad, who's worked in restaurants before, like, throughout most of his life, he has worked in Mexican restaurants, so, yeah, we know pretty much a lot about, we're Mexican, so, we know about Mexican food.
I was just more concerned about the business of running...
Yeah, we actually have a friend that's going to be with us. He's sitting right there. He actually owns two businesses.
Okay.
But in Chicago, they have the similar name, but he's going to help us out.
Okay.
What are your expected hours of operation?
Oh, our hours are going to be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., from Monday through Sunday.
Do we know what the hours are for other...
Typically, for type-two restaurants, conditions are placed that limit the hours of operation to close at midnight. I believe opening is 8:00 a.m.?
We've done 6:00 a.m., but I didn't know if, we've, the only ones I remember recently have been downtown, and this one's a little bit out of the downtown, so that's why I was wondering if there were any additional hour...
It's typically across the board, 6:00 a.m. to midnight.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
No, I would just say that I know there have been several restaurants that have tried to make it in this strip mall, and I do know people that work at the offices across the street, and they said they, you know, before this actually came on our docket, I had gone to Subway and found out they were closed down, and I went across the street to the assessor's office, and he had commented that there's nowhere to eat around there, so I think a new restaurant would be welcome in the area.
I would think with the number of people that are at Robert Crown and James Park on the weekends, that it'd be a good opportunity. I'm a little worried about the parking, though, because I know, as somebody that's been in that lot a lot of times, it's very often crowded, at least on the weekends.
I would say it'll keep my business in Evanston versus having me drive to Park Street every weekend, so...
Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, then, if there's no other questions, you can have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
We will close the record and begin our deliberation.
All right, because there's nobody else?
Yeah, I don't think there was anybody else, nobody else here to speak on this matter. Was there? Okay. General feedback, comments?
I agree with Andrew's comment. It seems to me that having a restaurant in this spot is probably a good thing, especially as opposed to vacant space, but the parking is a concern, and I guess more of a concern is, if not in that lot, that employees not take up parking spaces at Robert Crown, which is a public lot, as opposed to this one, which seems like it's at least in some way controlled by the property owner.
I have no comments.
No other comments? Then, since this is a matter in which we are recommending to the City Council, we have certain standards that must be met for us to make such a recommendation. And for the purpose of clarification, normally, we need four votes for a determining matter, but for a recommendation, since there are five members, a majority of three people will send it with a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation to the City Council. So with that, we will begin the standards. First standard, the requested special use is on the list of special uses in the zoning ordinance, and we find that this property at 843 Dodge is located in a C1 Commercial District, and it does require a special use for a type-two restaurant, but it is an approved special use, so that standard has been met. The second standard, the requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the Comprehensive General Plan and the zoning ordinance. In looking at the fact that this is a commercial district, obviously, the Comprehensive General Plan would intend for this to be a place in which such a restaurant could exist alongside other businesses, so this standard has been met. The third standard, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types in the immediate neighborhood and the effect of the proposed type of special use upon the city as a whole. I think that we've come to the generalization that, again, because of the fact that a restaurant did exist in this mall before this proposed restaurant, and did not appear to have a negative effect on the neighborhood, that placing a new restaurant in would not have an effect on, a negative effect on the neighborhood as well. So I feel that standard is met. Everyone else?
Agree.
Agreed.
Number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Again, this being a C1 district, it makes sense that a restaurant would be a use that would come in there, and the city has zoned its major artery streets to have these businesses, so a restaurant coming into this proposed property should not diminish the value of property in the neighborhood.
Agree.
Number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. Again, the fact that an existing restaurant was in there and seemed to function without undue problems for the neighborhood, it makes sense that a restaurant coming in and sort of taking its place, although not its actual physical place, should not put a large burden on the public facilities and services in the neighborhood.
Agreed.
Number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. This area, we've heard from some board members, can be a little tight and congested on its own, but I think that is more to what all is going on around there with the Crown Center and James Park and all the other recreational facilities and schools and things like that in the neighborhood. But it seems that the owner of the property seems to exercise some control over the lot in front, and that should help with traffic congestion.
Agreed.
Agree.
Number seven, the requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural resources. This one really does not heavily apply here, there's no historical or architectural, the important resources for this building, and so therefore, it has been met.
Agreed.
Number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. Again, this is a building that does exist and should not be, is not being expanded or in any way altered, and therefore, it should not affect anything relating to the natural or environmental features.
Agreed.
Agree.
And number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances, except to the extent such regulations have been modified through the planned development process or the grant of a variation. Again, it sounds like this is a new restaurant, they will go through the regulations of getting their restaurant license, everything like that, which would bring them into compliance. I don't see anything that would not bring them into compliance that is in our purview, so I feel this has been met.
Agreed.
I agree.
So with that, it appears that we all are in agreement on the standards, and so I will entertain a motion on the matter regarding our recommendation for 843 Dodge.
I'll move in the matter ZBA 12ZMJV-0060 with respect to 843 Dodge Avenue, that we approve the requested special use for a type-two restaurant at that address, subject to the following conditions. One, that the hours of operation be limited from 6:00 a.m. until 12:00 midnight, and two, that the applicant comply with the city litter collection and garbage disposal plans and use the property the way that it's been described on the record and in the documents on record.
It has been moved.
Can I add a friendly amendment about not having the employees park in the lot?
You may.
Can we require, I don't know how to quote phrase that, just that the employees not park in the lot, and the employees find parking on the street?
Okay.
I accept that amendment.
I would second that recommendation as proposed.
All right. So we have a recommendation to go to City Council with approval, with the conditions of the hours being between 6:00 a.m. and 12:00 midnight, that the applicant pay particular attention to the city's litter and garbage collection plans, making themselves aware with it and adhering to it, and that the employee should not park in the lot. Correct?
Yes.
That's what I have. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It appears that the vote is five in favor, none opposed. Congratulations, you can move forward with your project.
Where is she?
She's stuck on a train.
I'm going to text her, how far out are you?
I just don't want her to come if she's...
In the middle, yeah.
Yeah, because she can't come in the middle. We're going to go off the record for like, five seconds while I figure out where our chairperson is and if she will be making it here within the next couple of minutes. We'll wait for her, otherwise, we'll go ahead and move forward. There was evidently fire on the tracks or something.
I bet she's super happy about that.
Yeah.
Super, super happy. You guys do work for Northwestern?
We seek it out a lot, we've done a lot. Yes.
Well, duh. What happens to everybody at every level. I know I'm a Luddite, and I don't have, you know, a smartphone. Is that dorms? Is it dorms or... You're going to control... I know, suppose that's been the asking. They're going to control... I don't know, visual, but my own hand, where's it? And that they won't have it, according to something I read. It was a rumor, it had been only used for matches, and Michael Seer told me that their original height has been regained, but it'll still find... Yes, further away. I wonder if that'll actually, it'll actually help people just... I like a couple of geniuses that do that, because they're like, I can't even deal with voicemail, so they don't even set up their voicemail, they're just like, if you want to try to call... And they want to. It's pretty much the way they approach it. Yeah.
Any kind of, like, contractors, aren't you just glad they show up at all around
time? At least for the subs.
A lot of them are not... That's what it's coming out of. They're not drawn. How's your landscape? Oh, I think, do you love it? Aren't you guys really happy? Guys are really surprised.
We're going to go ahead and continue with the second case. I have not been able to reach Ms. Summers, but in the interest of moving things along and not keeping everyone here all night, we'll go ahead and begin the second case, which is for 2250 Sheridan Road. So if you could read that into the record, please.
Charles David, project manager, applies for a special use for one large and six small scoreboards for Northwestern University's tennis facilities at 2250 Sheridan Road. 2250 Sheridan Road is located in the T2 Transitional Campus District, which requires a special use permit for scoreboards, zoning code section 61543. The Zoning Board of Appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case.
All right, I believe Ms. Weinberg has...
I will be recusing myself from this case.
All right, so Ms. Weinberg will be recusing herself from the case. I will, in the interest of transparency, make it known that Scott Airy, who is representing Northwestern tonight here, is a former upstairs neighbor of mine, but I have had no contact with him in many years, and do not feel that my knowing him should have any impact on my decision in the case. So with that, I will ask anyone who plans to speak either for or in opposition to this matter to please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth in the matter that we're discussing to the best of your ability? All right. Mr. David, if you would like to come forward and present the project plan to us, please.
Thank you. You hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm here, obviously, to present the plan for the seven scoreboards.
For the record, could you please state your name and where you live?
Name is Charles Davidson, 1428 Noise, Evanston.
All right, go ahead, please.
Again, my name is Charles Davidson, I'm here with Scott Airy from Athletics, and Arvid, the tennis coach. I'll give you a quick introduction, my role here for the project is the project manager to, responsible for the construction of the facility. Scott's role is to operate the facility, and Arvid is the coach managing the facility. The purpose here is for the special use application for the seven scoreboards, that's six individual scoreboards that are located at the ends of the courts along the fence, and one main scoreboard, which is the majority of our discussion today. The area that we're proposing to construct the scoreboards has been a tennis facility for over 50 years, for as long as I can remember. It's recently went through some improvements over the last 18 months. There are 15 tennis courts in the overall facility, nine courts to the north, and this six-court section to the south. Over the last 18 months, Northwestern has invested replacing the surface... which requires a special use permit for scoreboards. Zoning code section 61543. The zoning board of appeals makes a recommendation to City Council, the determining body for this case.
All right. I believe Ms. Weinberg has...
I will be recusing myself from this case.
All right. So Ms. Weinberg will be recusing herself from the case. I will, in the interest of transparency, make it known that Scott Airy, who is representing Northwestern tonight here, is a former upstairs neighbor of mine, but I have had no contact with him in many years and do not feel that my knowing him should have any impact on my decision in the case. So with that, I will ask anyone who plans to speak either for or in opposition to this matter to please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth in the matter that we're discussing to the best of your ability? All right. Mr. David, if you would like to come forward and present the project plan to us, please.
You hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm here obviously to present the plan for the seven scoreboards.
For the record, could you please state your name and where you live?
My name is Charles Davidson, 1428 Neuz Evanston.
All right, go ahead, please.
Again, my name is Charles Davidson. I'm here with Scott Airy from Athletics and Arvid, the tennis coach. I'll give you a quick introduction. My role here for the project is the project manager to... Responsible for the construction of the facility. Scott's role is to operate the facility and Arvid is the coach managing the facility. The purpose here is for the special use application for the seven scoreboards. That's six individual scoreboards that are located at the ends of the courts, along the fence, and one main scoreboard, which is the majority of our discussion today. The area that we're proposing to construct the scoreboards has been a tennis facility for over 50 years, for as long as I can remember. It's recently went through some improvements over the last 18 months. There are 15 tennis courts in the overall facility. Nine courts to the north and this six-court section to the south. Over the last 18 months, Northwestern has invested replacing the surface of the courts, the fencing of the courts. We redid all the landscaping in the area and installed bleachers. The items that we're asking permission for, the six scoreboards, I'll tell you a little bit about those. Those are individual scoreboards for the six courts. They'll be located with a post being constructed on the outside of the fence and the scoreboard cantilevered over to the inside of the courts. Purpose of that is to keep the post out of the play for the players. The main scoreboard will be constructed not in the playing area, but in a center area between the two courts. We've started the process of trying to build the main scoreboard a little over 12 months ago in meetings with the alderwoman. It started with a meeting with the alderman. We originally had plans to construct the scoreboard on the east side along Sheridan Road and then it was requested that we move the scoreboard to the west side where it is currently shown. The scoreboard itself is designed to be constructed at 19 feet tall. The main scoreboard is designed to be constructed at 19 feet tall with its current location as a passageway for players and fans to enter underneath and through the scoreboard. We have looked at that scoreboard design from both a visibility as well as a sightline study. And some of the exhibits I presented to you guys today show those items. There's two color exhibits that show what the scoreboard looks like from the right of way on Sheridan Road. And there's one exhibit that's blown up that shows how it would look like through it.
My understanding from looking at the exhibits and from the application and so I can, at least for me, shortcut the main issue. Is the scoreboard gonna be visible at all from Sheridan Road?
No, it won't. No, it will not. If you'd like to look to the exhibit that shows the large photograph, proposed height of scoreboard. You guys can open... You guys have that? You have a color copy?
Yes, we do.
On September 25th, I had constructed a mock-up banner of what the top of the scoreboard would look like for both the height study and visibility study. It would have been a banner similar to what you see on top of the proposed scoreboard. It's a one-foot-high banner measuring to the same width as the proposed scoreboard. And then I went ahead and photographed that scoreboard along Sheridan Road. And the photograph that you have presented in front of you is what it would look like from Sheridan Road directly across the street.
What is the banner that you constructed? What is it attached to in the photograph?
In the photograph, it's attached to two posts. The two posts were set at 20 feet high and I set the banner at 19 feet in height. So to match the same height and location of where the top of the scoreboard would be.
So they're set along the west fence, correct?
Yes. It's set along exactly...
It's in the same location that you're proposing.
Yeah, we used two posts, set to the outside fence posts, and we used string to support it inside.
And did you take the photograph?
I did.
And is the photograph a fair and accurate depiction of what you saw when you took it?
Yes, the photograph is a fair and accurate depiction. Part of the...
I have a question about the scoreboards themselves. So are these courts, these tennis courts, they're not just for use by the tennis team at Northwestern, are they?
These six courts in their new sort of updated status will be predominantly for use by the tennis teams for practice and for competition. There will be times we'll have summer camps, youth programs. They'll be open for the campus community to use. So, much like the other nine courts are most of the time.
So can you describe sort of what the scoreboards are constructed of and how sort of how you've considered safety concerns of community members whose accuracy may not be as good as the tennis team?
So the individual scoreboards that are at the end of each of those six courts, it's an aluminum casing around the electronics that are inside. And I don't know the exact height of the bottom of those boards, but they're high enough up that they're not at risk for somebody to run into them. And as Charles described, the post that's supporting it is actually on the outside of the fence. So that's not a danger. So really, somebody that's on the tennis court, their nearest obstruction is gonna be the fence itself when they're playing.
Are they made of glass?
No, there's... Yeah, the digits are an LED insert and it's plastic. There's not glass that's in there. And I guess if a tennis ball hit them, I mean, it would break, but I don't consider it something that's a safety issue.
And are they intended to be kept out year-round?
Yeah, they would be there year-round and used, you know, just during the matches. But it's a permanent installation. If I may, just to make sure that everybody's clear about why we need scoreboards. I don't know if that's a question for the committee, but just for the record. Collegiate tennis is played in a dual-match format where two teams are playing and there's a double segment where there's three doubles matches going on. But then after that, there are six singles matches going on concurrently. And the idea is that the team who wins four of those seven... The doubles are considered one, you get one doubles point. And then whoever wins four of those seven contests is the winner of the dual-match. So each of those six courts has a singles match going on that has its own score. But those are also contributing to a team's score, which is depicted on the main scoreboard. So whereas I may be playing, and I know the score of the match I'm in on a given court, it's to my advantage as a member of the team to know how the rest of the team is doing on the other courts as a participant, but also from a fan standpoint as well to know how the other matches are going. If I'm watching one match, I can look at the scoreboard and see how the rest of the match itself is going. So I didn't wanna, you know, leave that to the interpretation of you guys if you had that question.
It appears that the back of the scoreboard is somehow being camouflaged with greenery. Is that correct?
I'll let Charles speak to that.
That's the intent, as part of our application. We're going to screen the back of the scoreboard and have a green wall or green trellis to grow up and a planter box built at the base.
Is the scoreboard going to have a visible sign that says "Gift From the Combe Family"? Or is that just the drawing?
Yes, it will have a... Visible from inside the scoreboard. That sign will be inset, within the tennis court area and only mostly visible once you enter the tennis facility.
Is there a... I'm looking at the view from entry drawing. So is this what I would see from the alley if I was approaching the area?
Correct.
Can you give a sense of how big that sign is?
We're looking at to cover the entrance 12 feet wide by 12 inches high.
And what material will that be? A sign that...
Yeah, I'm not sure. A metal sign with painted letters.
Can I ask a question about, again, this view from the entry, the outside view? You guys have gone through great pains to cover it and to camouflage it, which is nice and appreciated. But then you have what I like to call ears on either side of it, the two Northwestern logos. How did those get seemingly missed in this camouflaging? Does that make sense? So if I'm looking at elevation one, the view from the entry, right? These boxes that you guys have on either side, which viewed from the other direction have the Northwestern logo on them. Is there a reason that this just didn't get made wider so that those would be enclosed as well?
It doesn't have the same mass as the scoreboard. So when the architect rendered the screening, it was, you know, the intent was to screen the scoreboard and the mass of the scoreboard and not necessarily to screen the small sign that we were placing on the end caps.
And the small signs on the end caps, that's purely for decoration, right? They're not serving a function, is that correct? The two Northwestern ends...
They're Northwestern logos.
Are you guys amenable to extending the screen in the back so that those are camouflaged from the other side?
It's something to consider.
And the... Sorry, the other question I have is, these sort of two elements, if I look at the perspective and the view from the entry that are on either side, they look to me like they're brick piers up to a certain height. Is that what they are? So on either side of the gate here?
You know, those are just placeholders. We're looking, we need some storage facilities for the tennis program.
Ah, okay.
So, you know, they're not a complete detail of what we're proposing.
I see, I see, okay. So they have doors on it and you guys put balls and carts and...
Exactly.
All that stuff in there. Okay, I understand, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Davidson?
I guess just so we understand, what time did Northwestern tennis matches take place?
The matches are typically, I mean, obviously during daylight hours because the facility isn't lighted. It's only lighted for safety and not for play. So we would play on Friday afternoons and then on weekends. Weekend, I think, predominantly Saturdays and Sundays during daylight hours.
And the scoreboards will only be operated during Northwestern tennis matches?
Correct.
And I think I read somewhere, but can you just confirm? There's no speakers or sound associated with the scoreboards, correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions? All right. We'll hear from anybody else who would like to speak on this. And then, Mr. Davidson, you'll have an opportunity to wrap it up at the end. So I know there were a couple people over here who had raised their hand and wanted to speak. If you could just tell us your name and your address, please.
My name is Tavi Van Spalding and I... We live at 2331 Orington, which is the corner house on Orington and Colfax behind the NU tennis courts. And so my letter is, "Dear members of the zoning board of appeals, we live, we're neighbors and we live behind the NU tennis courts. We have a college junior as well as a freshman, both of whom were accepted at NU but chose to go away for college. We also have a junior at ETHS, a seventh grader at Haven Junior High and a fifth grader and a kindergartner at Orington School. And as you can see, we like children and young people. And I myself am a Northwestern alum and six years ago, our family became neighbors of Northwestern. We could have lived in many areas of the metropolitan Chicago, but when we were looking for a home, we specifically chose to live next to NU because its students' presence offers a unique vibrancy to an otherwise typical historic residential neighborhood on the lake. We also chose NU as our neighbor so that we could enjoy its arts, music and sports programs and our children could participate in the various educational programs sponsored by NU. Moreover, NU's beautiful grounds from the Lakefield, the Shakespeare Garden to Longfield also drew us to move here. Of all the things that NU generously shares freely and openly with its neighbors, our family probably uses and enjoys the tennis courts the most. We play tennis with most of our older children while the little kids help out by being the ball person. We truly appreciate and thank Northwestern for letting us use the courts. Though we enjoy being Northwestern's neighbors, there are major drawbacks to living next to a college campus. There are traffic issues on Colfax due to the NU students. So our ingress and egress out of our property is difficult. We are continually picking up beer bottles, pop cans and all sorts of rubbish thrown away by NU students. Also, the students have vandalized our property by toppling down our planters. The students are extremely inconsiderate in stepping on our lawn consistently and talking at the top of their voices in the middle of the night at times. But we've been willing to put up with these major drawbacks because we realize that they are positive aspects from living next to a unique neighbor like NU. Recently, NU applied to put scoreboards on its tennis courts. According to Melissa Klotz, zoning planner for the city of Evanston, its latest revised proposal indicates that the total height for the large scoreboard will be 19-foot-high versus the original 22-foot, 4-inch height. The signage at the top will be 10-foot-tall. The back of the large scoreboard will be designed so that it is not as obviously a scoreboard from the alley view. In the light of NU's generosity to its neighbors, I would like the Evanston Zoning Board of Appeals to consider NU's proposal for the scoreboards with the following conditions satisfied and questions considered. One, why are the scoreboards necessary now when the tennis team has lived without it for so many years? Two, could NU make the scoreboards more in character with the historical nature of the neighborhood? That is, could the scoreboards look more historical or antiquated? Three, could NU make the scoreboard exactly the same height as the fence so that the neighborhood would not look so institutional and thus property values would not be devalued? Four, has NU considered using temporary scoreboards that can be put up and taken down? And five, could the neighbors have access to the courts during daylight hours after the new scoreboards are installed? And could NU specify if the courts will be locked up after the installation of the new scoreboards? We want to be good neighbors and we are asking NU to be the same. Specifically, we're asking Northwestern to satisfy these conditions and answer these questions because we want to understand and accommodate the university's needs. But Northwestern must not forget that it is in a historical residential neighborhood. Northwestern needs to take care of its neighbors too by making sure that our properties would not be devalued by any structural changes in the buildings, on the university's property and in the development of its land. Thank you for your attention.
Does anyone have any questions? All right. Whoever is next that would like to speak? And again, your name, please.
My name is Alan Zunnamon, Z-U-N-A-M-O-N, 2323 Orington. Have to admit, this is somewhat spontaneous. A lot of rumors have circulated over the summer. I will echo a lot of what Mrs. Spalding said in terms of being a neighbor, our rough location. We're actually next-door neighbors. I'm gonna take just a slightly different spin, though, and simply say, I happened to come across some minutes from a Northwestern city committee meeting that will actually in part answer why they need the new scoreboards and has to do mostly with helping to promote one of what I think is a great program in this country and to have scoreboards help the team and so forth and so on. I don't really have any issue with that. But in these minutes, Claire Pollard, the women's coach, is quoted as saying how the courts are often open to the public. And the point that I'm gonna make is that... And the point that I'm going to make is that the so-called "South Courts," the courts that are at issue tonight, since the enhancements of the bleachers, I would argue that those courts are virtually never open anymore because the reality is, they've put some investment into it and they want to keep the courts protected. So unless it's being run by a camp, and my boys have all taken tennis and we, I mean, we love the program, it's all, all positive. But what's been frustrating is that the North Courts are generally unlocked, but often will have tournaments and things going on. So there's no sort of good way to know if in fact you'll have access. So you sort of show up to those courts and you find maybe there's a conflict, maybe there isn't. But in the old days, going back two years and more ago, the South Courts tend to be open all the time. So now what I'm imagining is that since they put those bleachers in, they've changed their policy. Obviously, the scoreboards take it sort of to the next level and I guess I'm sort of here to use the zoning board in part as a mediator to, to sort of negotiate with Northwestern that I personally don't have a major objection to the scoreboard proposal, but what I'd like to see is a, a way to improve the public access if it means things like hiring a student who is their sort of security guard, charging a user fee, $5 to use the court, maybe just the South Courts. Economically, it would be relatively straightforward to make that happen, but it sounds to me like at this point, they don't really want to have the hassle and so, you know, get the permission for the courts. But the policy going forward is those South Courts are going to basically stay locked up tight from the public. So I'm sort of here to try to look for some kind of compromise that, that makes the South Courts more accessible to the public in exchange for more wide support of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for that witness? Would you like to speak as well?
Might as well. My name is Kim Yee. We're at 2255 Orington at the corner of Dartmouth and Orington and just next to the International House, which is sort of separates us from the main South Tennis Court areas. And while we would not actually see this 19-foot, I guess, structure, the major, we would see the, the ones that are on Dartmouth themselves. I do echo what my neighbors have said. It is a, a love-hate relationship sometimes, unfortunately, that we have with, with Northwestern given issues that tend to arise and we were very, very tolerant, I think, of these. We've had to tolerate lots of nails in our tires because of the theater garage and construction that was taking place in the alley for many, many years, going on like 15, 20 years until it took two or three meetings with Northwestern folks to get them agree to put the, you know, construction of that within a enclosed area and to encourage bagging up of nails that would come out of the dumpsters and stuff like that and the, you know, continuous, you know, the kids and things like that. But we love being in this neighborhood and it would seem reasonable to have a quid pro quo, given some of the things that we do suffer, you know, frankly, weekly. We have students walking up to our house all the time thinking that we are Northwestern's house, International House, and knocking on our door, you know, trying to find out where, you know, the International House is. It's okay, it's fine, it's wonderful, but it is nice to, again, have the tennis courts nearby, so, and free to use as much as we can. We do use them as much as possible, so, thank you.
Would you like to speak, sir?
My name is John Spalding. I'm also at 2331 Orington. And I just reiterate the two points my neighbors and spouse have made regarding, I'd just say the appearance, I appreciate the board's consideration of that, that does matter to us. It certainly matters on several things, aesthetically as well as economically. So you seem very sensitive to that, I appreciate that. I'd like to iterate, reiterate our concern about that the appearance is appropriate. And then I would just underscore access. We try and be good neighbors. As you've heard, we could, without dwelling a long time, we're, we try and be good neighbors ourselves. We are supportive of Northwestern, but there is the attention there. So access to the courts, I think, is important to us as neighbors, so I would reiterate that point. And it appears frankly that the South Courts will be inaccessible as a practical matter to, to the public after these changes.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. Any questions for Mr. Spalding? Is there anyone else this evening who would like to speak on this matter before I give Mr. Davidson a chance to answer the concerns of the neighbors and to sum up his presentation? Seeing none, Mr. Davidson, if you'd like to give us a summary and feel free to respond to any of the issues neighbors have raised. You certainly don't have to go point by point or anything, but this is just for them to be able to get their voices heard.
Well, there's, thank you for your comments. There was a number of comments made related to the, you know, what I can take as a note is height, historic nature, and use of the space. For the purpose of this meeting, we're really looking more towards the height of the scoreboard and the historic nature. The scoreboard's height was developed with consideration, as Scott iterated, to the sightlines of the players for visibility. We chose the height because it allowed the fans to view the scoreboard from where their seating, as well as the players to view it. So we feel that this is the right application for its use and we'd like to move forward with the way it's shown. The historic nature of it, it was taken into consideration and I would like to state that that's the purpose of the green screening application that we're putting on the back that kind of addressed some of the other concerns that we had when we met with the other woman and the green screening was a way to kind of screen the overall application. So I'm not in a position to discuss the access for the courts, so I won't be able to address that at this time. I don't have any other, so that'd be my conclusion.
With respect to the six-side scoreboards, it seems, just from looking at it again, those are going to be, the top height there is 13 feet, is that correct?
12.6 would be marked. I mean, we're, we're looking at a height just to get over the top of the fence with the, with the, with the structure and then to come back down. So the height would be what was required for the steel, for the, I would say 12 feet 6 inches.
How tall's the fence?
12 feet.
Anybody who, last call for anybody who wants to speak. Seeing, seeing no one else who wishes to speak, we will go ahead and close the record and begin our deliberation. Again, this is a matter which we will be referring to city council because, again, it is another special use. Do board members have general thoughts, concerns?
I, as a general matter, I, it seems like they've taken a lot of, first of all, they've revised their plan to try to address other city boards' concerns. And they also seem to have paid particular attention to masking the scoreboards to the extent possible from the view on Sheridan Road and from the alley on the backside. I do think, I, it strikes me that this kind of modern facility is what's required for athletics programs to recruit top talent, to attract fans, and it seems to me like a good project. I do, for me personally, I would condition the approval of the use on the expansion of that camouflage on the backside to mask the ears that Mary Beth pointed out. But I'm, I'm generally in favor of the project. I think it seems like a good project and they've taken a lot of concern for the community.
I'm, I'm in agreement with Scott's comments. I wonder if there's a way that we can, from the green screening, I don't know how long that, that the landscaping is going to take to grow up, so is there a way to condition mature landscaping, you know? I don't, I don't know if we have the, A, the ability to do that or not. Because, I mean, the green screen will be nice once it's fully living, until it has a chance to grow in, it's not so necessarily attractive.
That seems like a good idea to me.
I mean, I think that we can condition that. Obviously, city council can?
Do what they want.
Do what they want with that, with that recommendation.
I just, I have one other comment, I'm sorry. I just, so, so that it's clear to the community members who spoke that, that we were listening, I, I don't think it's within the board's purview to try to facilitate a negotiation with the, the university over how it uses its property. But as an interested community member who lives not far from there, I'd love access to the courts, too. I just, I don't think it's something we can do as a board.
I would agree with that, but the record that we are taking this evening will go to city council. I also noticed a member of city council is in the room, so I'm sure that they can help with any sort of facilitation between the neighborhood and Northwestern on opening up any access to facilities that Northwestern is willing to do and that the neighbors would be happy with. But again, that's not something that we can really address, but the issue has been noted and all city council members will be made aware of it when they review the record for Any other comments from the board? If not, this again, being a special use, we will go through the standards and make our recommendation to city council based on our finding on those standards. The first standard is that the requested special use is on the list of special uses in the zoning ordinance. I'm not real up on my scoreboard signage, but I would have to believe that if city staff is presenting it to us, that it is one of the special uses that is allotted in this district. So that standard has been met. The requested special use is in keeping with the purposes and policies of the comprehensive general plan and the zoning ordinance. Again, the fact that this is something that is anticipated, using some sort of scoreboard or electronic signage in a campus district, it makes sense that this would be something that would be in keeping with the comprehensive plan and is addressed in the zoning ordinance, so that standard has been met. Number three, the special use will not cause a negative cumulative effect when its effect is considered in conjunction with the cumulative effect of various special uses of all types on the immediate neighborhood. I believe that the, the university is making attempts to lessen the impact of the structure by screening it and trying to make it appear like it's been there for a, for a while and is not going to stand out like a sore thumb. Again, they have listened to concerns and reduced the height. I believe it was originally something like 22, 23 feet. And so they have reduced the height in listening to the neighbors and the city and trying to reduce the impact. So I feel that this standard has been met.
I agree.
Agree.
The, number four, the requested special use does not interfere with or diminish the value of property in the neighborhood. Again, going back to what we just talked about, the university seems to be making attempts to lessen the impact on the neighborhood, both in placement and sightlines, as well as camouflaging the new scoreboard in order to lessen its impact on the neighborhood and not make people feel like they're living on a sports field or something like that. So I feel this has been met.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Number five, the requested special use can be adequately served by public facilities and services. I don't know that the scoreboard really has any direct impact on that. The courts exist as they are and so obviously, any facilities usage already exists in this location, so I feel that standard has been met.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Number six, the requested special use does not cause undue traffic congestion. Again, this is an existing, it's an existing use to have the courts there. The addition of a scoreboard may draw in a few more fans, but I don't think it's going to overwhelm that particular corner and cause undue traffic congestion, so I feel that one has been met.
Agreed.
Agreed.
The requested special use preserves significant historical and architectural While it is not necessarily preserving them, it is trying to restore them by bringing those elements into a new structure, by making the structure appear that it has been there for a while and with the green screen, trying to, again, soften and not make a, a huge solid structure stand out, but soften it somewhat.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Number eight, the requested special use preserves significant natural and environmental features. Again, I would just reiterate what I'd said in number seven, that the use of the green screen is actually helping to bring some softness, some, some green into that area as opposed to having just the back of a, of a scoreboard. So I feel it has been met.
Agreed.
And number nine, the requested special use complies with all other applicable regulations of the district in which it is located and other applicable ordinances. I don't think that there's any particular ordinances here that, that are under our purview. I'm assuming signage will be addressed by the city if it has not already been. I don't know where that falls into the?
The signage was addressed by the sign review and appeals board. A variance was requested since the sign is negligibly visible from Sheridan Road and with the revised plan that we are currently looking at, that is found to be within substantial compliance of what the sign review and appeals board granted.
All right. So that's the only particular thing that I can think might come into play here. So I believe that standard has been met.
Agreed.
It appears that we are in general consensus and I would ask for a, a motion to recommend to city council.
I will make the motion in ZBA Matter 12ZMJV-0058 with respect to the property at 2250 Sheridan Road, that the zoning board recommend that the special use be approved subject to the following conditions. That the screen intended to camouflage the scoreboard from the alley side of, of the scoreboard be extended to the sides so that it also camouflages what we've referred to on the record as the ears that, from the court side, will have Northwestern logos on them. And second, that the back of the greens being, green screen be required to have mature plant coverage rather than something that may take a long time to grow in or an extended time to grow in.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded to recommend to city council approval with the conditions that the green screen be extended to cover what we are calling the ears of the scoreboard. that the green screen be extended to cover what we are calling the ears of the scoreboard, and that mature landscaping be used to speed the process of covering the green screen with plant material. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The vote appears to be four to zero in favor, so it will go to the City Council with recommendation for approval. And again, to the neighbors who have spoken, thank you for coming and speaking this evening. Like I said, your, your concerns have been recorded, and City Council will make note of them. With that, we have no other matters on the case for this evening, so we will stand adjourned to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Which is October 16th, Tuesday, at 7:30 PM in this room. There are two special uses on the agenda. I do urge all members to please try to be available to attend.
All right, and so with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.